If you would bow with me. Father, we thank you for this day and Father, we thank you for the opportunity to come together. Father, we lift up our nation as we go through this COVID. And Father, we just pray for those that are ill. Father, we pray for your protection to be around all of us, especially the most vulnerable. Father, we just pray that you be in this meeting, that you would give us wisdom and that we can do your business, Father, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen. This time, Councilmember White will lead us into place.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I am Texas Fire. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
You may be seated. Okay, we have no proclamations, awards, or presentations, so we will move to the consent agenda. I will entertain a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed, adjourned. Move to other council issues. Consider a bid award to 2019 CIP water and sewer line replacement. Ron.
Good evening, Mayor, for the name of Mayor Jackson. This item is to consider award of 2009 CIP water and sewer line replacement. The beachboard strategy were opened June 9th of 2002. And clear responsive beachboard city project, that's the lowest responsive bidder was TC excavation in the amount of $1,134,000, $189. The bid was 13% below our estimate, which was 1.3 million. The purpose of this project is to replace approximately 11,500 linear bit of various size of water and sewer lines. The public works department has reviewed the bids and the commands aboard the bid to TC excavation in the amount of $1,134,000, $189. And I'll declare to answer to your questions.
Okay, are there any questions from the council? Okay, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed, adjourned. Next, review and accept 2019 comprehensive annual financial report to CAFER. Ms. Munson.
Mayor, council, this agenda item is to accept the 2019 comprehensive annual financial report that was issued on our financial statements by the firm of Weaver. And we went through that everything and I just need your approval on that report, please. Do you have a mic anywhere?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed, adjourned. Any needs, Senator. Item three, consider approval of a community-wide program for COVID-19 testing. Mr. Phillips.
Good evening, council, Mr. Mayor. The agenda item before you is to consider a COVID-19 community-wide testing program. As council is aware, COVID-19 Task Force was created to review possible projects and expenditures of federal care funds that were allocated for COVID-19 approved expenses. The Task Force received a presentation from a team consisting of Jason Cooper, Dr. Ruiz, and Dr. Gonzalez, and members of Odessa Fire Rescue have served as the administration of the mobile testing center. This is also the drive-through testing center and also the nursing home testing center that we've seen in our community. The team has recommended taking the testing to community locations to allow those who are unable to get to the Coliseum and also give the ability for those to get testing in their local neighborhoods. The number of positives in our community have continued to rise since the state is open, so the need for testing is definitely present. The team recommends a total of 16 testing locations with testing in both the summer and fall of this year. In order to accomplish the testing contract, we require with the Texas Tech Health Sciences Center and also professional services agreement with Dr. Ruiz and Dr. Gonzalez. The expenses will result from the support staff working under Dr. Ruiz and Dr. Gonzalez, who will also be, who will be working through Timp Agency, and there will also be cost for the lab to conduct the test. There are also costs associated with city staff and supply expenses and also education tools for the community. The team anticipates testing 200 individuals per location, and this will add up to 3200 tests over the 16 locations. The total cost for this program is $718,488. This breaks down to $44,905.50 per location, and this comes down to approximately $225 per test. There are several clinics in Odessa that are testing individuals. It is, we've seen costs up to $250 per test, so we are below that number that we are seeing out there. This program would be free to the citizens that have come to the location, so there would be no cost to them. It'd be funded through the CARES program initially for the eight sites. And if you can see the map that we have here, we've strategically picked parks within the city where we've seen not only hotspots, but areas that have minority populations, Latinos, and also African-Americans who have been overwhelmingly impacted by COVID-19 with higher numbers. These parks are in those areas, and they're also in areas with low and moderate income families. And we have seen that these families have less ability to miss work and also to afford a test. So with that, the team is here. If you have questions, Dr. Gonzalez is here, Jason Cooper, Chief White, who is going to actually be the boots on the ground for the testing program here if there are questions that we can ask.
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to know if you would please explain to the public what the CARES program is.
Yes, ma'am. So CARES funding is federal funding that was provided in several facets to cities, businesses, individuals for support. Specifically, the city is eligible for up to just a little over $6 million for funding to provide testing, medical supplies, small business assistance, rent assistance, there's various items that we provided there. So when talking with the Task Force, testing in the community is something that was identified. We did put the program together, and that's why we're presenting it.
Also, I'd like to just point out, you know, in that when we got the money, that was something that I was very interested in because I know that, as you stated, African-Americans and Latinos are hit very hard in most communities. Our community is seeing, I think, at least a 70% Hispanic population that's been affected. And I realize that it's important that we reach out to these neighborhoods because oftentimes they don't have the means or the financial means or the transportation to get to a testing location. It does not mean that they do not want to be tested and that they do not want to help flatten the curve. And so I think it's very, very important, and I appreciate that we're looking at these locations. They probably can't see, you might name a couple of the...
Sure, yes, ma'am.
I can't see, probably everybody's eyes are better than mine.
Sure. So the first eight locations that we have identified are Sherwood Park, Central Park, Salinas Park, UTPB Park, Wondell Park, Floyd Gwynne Slater, and Woodson Park. Yes, ma'am, sir.
I think it's, I think it's also important for people to realize that, you know, we wanted to do something that was very effective in our community with this CARES money. And so, taking these tests out to people that could not otherwise have transportation or afford $250 for a test, I mean, this is free to anybody that wants to come and have these tests. Also, we had first, we're just going to do this first round of testing, and now we have decided that we will do the second round again in the fall. So we are very serious and concerned about COVID-19. And so people, we want people to feel like they have the opportunity to be tested and understand more about it. So this is of now testing and then again in the fall.
I have, I have actually three questions. First of all, on the CARES Act, is this a reimbursement or will this be upfront money?
It'll be reimbursed. The city will have to expend the funds, and we will see reimbursement for it.
Okay. And so on the citizens that are tested, will it be city and county?
Yes, ma'am. I believe that we, at the direction of council, that most council tells us otherwise, that we will test anyone that comes to these locations.
Okay. Is the city going to have to put this money, all of the money upfront, or is the county going to assist?
So we did approach the county today regarding the program. There was a motion that was, that was provided by one of the commissioners to assist the city in funding for county testing, and that motion did not receive a second, so it was not voted on.
It's unfortunate. And then, are we going to, or will the sites, will the citizens going to the sites need to provide an ID to show that they are a resident of Eppert County?
So they will need some form of identification. And in talking with the team, it does not have to be a driver's license, it doesn't have to be an ID card. Someone can provide a utility bill, electric bill, water bill, that identifies who they are for the tracing purpose and for their locating purposes.
Okay. And then last but not least, I know when the county did sit there, said that the Coliseum, the numbers of people that participated was lower than what was anticipated. So, does the group have a plan for that? If we don't have the people coming out, I believe they will, but if they don't, then...
Well, Councilmember White, I can tell you what we do have planned with this program. So we will be utilizing our code enforcement officers, printing flyers that our communications department has drafted, and we're going to place flyers and masks on everyone's door. We shouldn't say everyone, we are going to print 1,500 flyers per location. The code enforcement officers will go out and put those on doors. Our communications department is partnering with local media groups to go on both on the Spanish and English television as well as Spanish and English radio. We will also use social media pushes as well.
Okay. Will CARES reimburse on advertising?
Yes, ma'am. And that is a, that is a component of this budget. We do have money in for marketing.
Thank you.
I'd just like for you to repeat. So I know that we have a dollar figure. What was the dollar figure that the county was asked to contribute to help with this situation?
It was $40,000 that was motioned to assist the city with the program.
And the motion did not receive a second?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so they are not going to do it?
They were not participating with the program financially, no, ma'am.
And we are serving both city residents and county residents?
Correct, yes, ma'am.
Unless the council wants to direct us or...
No, I think it's important, you know, that we, that we do serve the citizens, and to me, the citizens are the citizens, you know, they don't have a label, they are the citizens. But I would like to applaud the city for going forward with this, and I would, I just don't know, you know, that the county, $40,000 based on the amount that we're being asked to put in, and it's, I want it understood that the county was also given CARES money to spend in efforts such as these. And so it was not money that we were asking additional. They also have the opportunity to use their CARES money to help with our citizens, not their citizens, not our citizens, it's our citizens. The City of Odessa and Eppert County are our citizens. And I just think, you know, I just want that to be stated, that it was a small amount that we were asking to contribute. And I don't believe that we as a council will be saying, pick and choose who we test. I think if they come for testing, they'll be tested. So I applaud the city for that, and I'd like to think that the county would want to do the same, but if it died for a lack of a second, I don't know.
Just as an FYI, the county is having a testing program brought to their two locations that they've identified, Kelus Turner Park and their south side volunteer fire department. So they are going to have testing available for county residents. And it was my understanding at that meeting that if a city resident does make it out to one of those two locations in the county, that they would not turn those individuals away as we would, we would not as well.
I propose, so are they, who are they using for their testing?
They're utilizing the National Guard. And Councilmember Willis, I think that brings up a good point. I definitely applaud the National Guard and what they're, what they're doing, but our program does have a component where there's a before and after outreach to citizens. Dr. Ruiz, Dr. Gonzalez, and their program, they are going to triage everyone that comes in. Everyone will go home with a packet with information about COVID. They'll have a thermometer, they'll have masks, they'll have gloves to be able to go home because, believe it or not, when they did do the triage for the drive-through clinic, a lot of individuals did not have masks. So this does allow the masks to be spread out into, into the community. And beyond that, if someone does test positive, they will have a contact individual, a medical professional or nurse to get information on. There will be information provided in their, in their packets if they do become positive on how to seek rental assistance or other type of assistance if they're unable to work, things of that nature. So we will be with them from, from their journey from the beginning until, till the end of their getting back.
As a member of the Task Force, if I may comment that this is a community, I think that's number one most important thing that we all need to remember, is we have a COVID problem in our community, which includes our county and our city. I want to commend very much so Dr. Lewis and Dr. Gonzalez, Chief, for the things that were presented to us. It is such a fantastic program, and the things that you're going to be able to provide those that are tested is absolutely a one. Thank you for presenting the program, thank you all for your involvement, and I think it's just such a great thing to our community that we, through our opportunity, through the CARES Act fund, can utilize those funds for this very, very important testing.
I'd like to ask, I don't know if they are, so I'd like to ask them to stand.
Would the team please, please stand?
Philip, you might, you might explain if they have done the testing in Midland and they've got this down to a, I mean, they have it down to a science. Didn't you all say you could test 200 people in about three or four hours? Isn't that what you told us?
Yeah.
So this isn't going to be something that's going to take people all day waiting in line to do. I mean, this is just a really great thing that's going, we're going to be able to share and provide for our city.
I think it's a great thing for the...
As a member of the Task Force, I want to commend Fire Department and the team for the wonderful job, the idea coming up with this and putting it out there that we can test people that need, that want to be tested for it. And I commend you all for a wonderful job and keep up the good work. Mayor, with that, I would recommend...
I have one more.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I would just like to say, it's, it's really important, and I'm glad to see that as a component of it, is aftercare, because I've talked to a couple of people who've been tested positive, and they really don't know what to do once they leave the testing area. You know, they don't know what to do for their households, they don't know what to do afterwards, they just know, maybe I wait 14 days, and what happens in between and what happens after. So I think that's a very, very, a very important component of it.
Yes, ma'am. And I think as Dr. Ruiz, I'll utilize a story that she had, that as part of the mobile testing, some of these individuals didn't know who to call. And so she would receive calls in the late hours, middle of the night about individuals, what do I do for this, what do I do for that? So they will be available for that, and they, as part of this budget, they'll receive technology such as internet and phone that they can provide those assistance to individuals.
Philip, now this is a test that is sent off. This isn't a rapid test.
It's not a rapid test, no serious...
So this one is actually 100% positive or 100% negative. One of the tests that you get at Singular Care, placed over on Rambiu, those are the ones they call probable because they have an 80% negative, but with a 20% error. So only 80% of the negatives are true, and there's a 20% false negative. So that's one thing that we, that is going to be taken care of in the...
Yes, sir.
Deal Flex just came out with a new testing kit. It is a person that can take it home and actually do it, and it's 95% accurate. So they just came out with that.
Yeah. And so these are just take-home tests, I mean, these tests, we'll send it off, get it in three or four days. Sorry.
Sure. One thing the chief did, one way to also present is that as part of the intake for the individuals that come to the park location, that we are utilizing a program that is called YOCHI, and that's a virtual emergency management software. And that is a software that the county is allowing us to utilize during this testing program.
Okay, Councilmember Ron.
I would like to make a motion that we approve that which has been presented to us by Jason, Chief, Dr. Lewis, and Dr. Gonzalez and the team, with COVID-19 testing to be used for the CARES Act fund?
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed, adjourned. Thank you, Philip. Thank you all. Next, we'll open a public hearing to consider the approval of a request by Investment Corporation of America Owners to rezone Windsor High Edition. Mr. Brenner.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. The city mailed out 19 notices related to this request. We had one notice returned. We did receive one written protest. That was, the citizen was concerned with property values, and I think with the property being developed, that property value will not be affected in any way. In fact, it will probably be a positive for property values in this area. The property involved in the request is located at 37th and Inglewood. Site is currently zoned single-family, two-drill reservation. It is vacant. Land use in the general area consists of both single-family and multifamily residential development. There's also an assisted living facility in the area. The YAPC in this case, and the owner of the property is ICA, and they are requesting a zone change to office. And what this will do is remove the DR designation from the site and also facilitate the development of office facility, and I do believe it will be a medical office on this site. The proposed zone change to office is not in conflict with the City of Odessa's land use plan. In fact, the office zoning will be a bis buffer or intermediate zone between the single-family and the multifamily development in this area. And also, the, the office zoning is not in conflict with the existing zonings in this area. The Planning and Zoning Commission did give unanimous approval to this request, and the planning staff does concur with this recommendation for approval. We have yet to answer any questions.
Any questions from council?
Do we, the one protest that we have here, did we contact him?
No, ma'am, we hadn't contacted him, but...
And we haven't heard anything?
Hadn't heard anything negative. Like I say, it was just the concern about property value.
Property value.
As I stated, that in fact will probably go up when it's developed as a medical facility.
Other questions from council? Okay, this is a public hearing, so at this time, we will open up the floor for anyone who would like to comment on this agenda item. If you would, please come forward. Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed, adjourned. Item five, we'll open a public hearing to consider the amendment of Chapter 14 of the City Code Of Ordinances, Section 14-1, sorry, -11-1, fencing and screening. Mr. Brenner.
Yes, sir. Currently, the city's zoning ordinance related to fencing and screening, this relates to the location and the height of the fence. There's not anything that addresses materials to be used. What this amendment will do is actually address materials to be used in the building of the fence. Highlights of the amendment would be that materials to be used when either building a new fence or replacing a fence will be industry or standard recognized fencing materials. It will prohibit scrap metal, plywood, pallets, things of this nature from being used as fencing material. Also, in a residential district, barbed wire, razor wire cannot be used except for agricultural purposes. And also, in a non-residential lot, the barbed wire and razor wire cannot be used if it's adjacent to residential zone property. We also have a section in the amendment that says a fence needs to be maintained in a safe and aesthetic manner. And that's basically what it is, just addressing materials to be used when building a fence. Oh, also, one other thing that I was, I already failed to mention is a repair, against the portion that's repaired, has to be done with a also recognized and standard fencing material.
Any questions from council? Okay, this is a public hearing, so anyone who would like to comment on this agenda item, may please come forward. Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed, adjourned. Thank you, Mr. Brenner.
Thank you, sir.
Next, under ordinances, consider to install traffic signals. Mr. Phillips.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This, this agenda item is basically a housekeeping item. There's a section in the city ordinance that identifies all the signalized locations. So this agenda item is to add the intersection of Evans and 87th and Dawn and 87th. At the previous council meeting, a couple, two weeks ago, council awarded that bid award. So this is just to get the signalized intersections into the ordinance. And I can answer any questions if you have.
Any questions for Mr. Phillips? Okay, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
A motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed, adjourned. Thank you, Mr. Phillips. I would like to move the public comment item up. We do have one citizen who would like to comment on a small business property issue or tax issuance, just so he doesn't have to stay here the entire time in a hotel motel. So Mark Trotter would come forward, and Strut will have three minutes.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council. I just want to get an idea of if we've had any meetings about the small business property taxes coming up, and we're already six months into this year, and with all this COVID going on and all the shutdowns that have happened, what is the city council or the city prepared to do about these property taxes that are going to be due coming another six months? Has any meetings been taking place? Have y'all gone to the state or the federal government to kind of back up these funds? Because if the guys can't, if the people can't make money, how are they going to pay the property taxes? But yet, no meetings have been taking place that I know of or aware of. So can somebody answer that?
Sure. No meetings have been held. We are beginning the budget process, and that's when we sit down and talk about it. So, but the CARES Act, I do not believe it allows that it covers taxes. I believe it will help.
Mayor, this is not on the agenda.
Oh, that's right, it's not on the agenda. So I apologize, it's not on the agenda, I can't discuss it, but I'll be happy to visit with you, or you can call me and we can talk about it.
All right, Mayor. I'd like to, that would be great, because I think that's going to be very interesting to hear about. I know a lot of small business people right now that are asking that same question, and it would be great to have some in the works so that we can prepare on what's going to happen.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, move to item seven. Consider outside agency request for funding for FY 2020/21 budget, hotel motel. We will, go ahead, Mr. Phillips.
Okay, Councilman Mayor, this is to consider the outside agency request, and I believe y'all have a sheet to go by, and would probably be best if we kind of go in order in case y'all want to make any notes to the side. Our budget manager, Zach, is going to be filling in the information as we go along. But first, you'll be listening to all the comments, and I believe you've set a time limit on those, so we're ready to begin that.
Okay. We all have the packets that were provided to us, so we've all read those. So we're going to allow each organization two minutes to speak, just to bring up any points they would. So we will start first with the Children's Miracle Network. Hope we have a representative here.
Thank you, Council, for having me here tonight. My name is Haley Powi, and I'm the director of Children's Miracle Network at MCH. I want to start by saying how grateful we have been for your funding last year. With that funding, you have helped create many miracles in our NICU and pediatric units, MCH. MCH does fund salaries and basic operating costs for these units, but we cover anything outside of that, such as equipment, highly specialized training for the staff and families, as well as charitable care. As we face the current healthcare crisis and the resulting financial consequences, we need your help now more than ever. $36,446.38 of the funding requested will fund a draft omnibus. A life-saving piece of equipment and $17,169 will fund three billet cocoon bags, which provide crucial phototherapy for infants. With me tonight are the Davis family, with their kids Anderson, Rhett, our 2020 CMN local champions. The funding we are requesting will help us purchase equipment that helps save their lives, as it will save countless others in the future. I would like to pass it off now to the Davis family to tell their story.
Hello, and we are recently potty training, so it's always an adventure here. Thank you for bearing with us. My name is Kelby Davis, and this is my husband Garrett, and our twins Anderson and Rhett. our twins Anderson and Rhett, they are two years old, and we have spent a little bit of time experiencing what Children's Miracle Network has to offer. So we're just so honored that we have the opportunity to come here today to just serve as a physical example of how these funds and these monies make people's lives better. And so we started when they were born at thirty-five weeks. We spent twenty days in the NICU. Anderson was pretty sick, she had several blood transfusions and was on a ventilator for several days, and we were not able to hold her at all during that time, which is hard because she'd been in the womb with Rhett for thirty-five weeks, and now was not with her brother and could not be with us. And if it weren't for the giraffe bed that I know Haley is talking to you about tonight, it would have been a lot harder to have her care, because, because of the giraffe bed, they needed to check her temperature, her weight, keep her body warm. They never had to move her. That bed did all of that forego, which is amazing. And Rhett spent a lot of time in the giraffe bed too. He just wasn't quite as sick as Anderson, so we saw in both examples. And then also, I know she's asking for the Billy Light blanket. Anderson also spent some time under the Billy Light, and to know that she could have spent less time under there would have just been a great blessing for our family because we could have held, held her even sooner. And then as probably some of you know, Anderson also was a pediatric patient more recently, a medical center hospital, when she was hit in the chest and the face after the August thirty-first shooting. And so we cannot tell the community enough, and Children's Miracle Network, and people like you, thank you enough for supporting programs like Children's Miracle Network, because you never think you're going to be in the hospital with premature babies for that long, but you sure never think you're going to need them because your eighteen-month-old daughter will get shot. And I'm so thankful that our community has the equipment, has the funds and the facilities that they do to not just take care of my babies, but to take care of all the babies and the children of this community that we need so much. I am more, a bigger advocate now than ever for children's healthcare in this community, and I'm just so thankful that we have the honor and the opportunity to come speak to people like you.